I'm going to call this meeting over.
I'd like to call this meeting over. Roll call, Hanson.
Mayor Ray Wakeman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pandros.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Rutley.
Here.
Donald Weaver.
Here.
Adam Gonzalez.
Here.
And Ruthie Seaworth.
Here.
Okay. We have a forum so we can proceed with the meeting. The motion to approve the consent items, three and four.
I make the motion that we approve them.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, open forum. Anyone in the audience have anything to say?
A man of few words. That is your interlocutor, Raymond.
Oh, okay. This is the signed copy?
Signed copy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sealed and authorized.
Thank you, appreciate you. Anyone else have anything to say? Okay, let's go to item six, discuss amending the old animal ordinance or creating a new one for animal control. That's a tough issue and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussion on that.
Is the old, is there still an ordinance in place?
We have an ordinance in place. It's, it's, looks like this. It's.
Right, I remember that, so.
And it is, it is a current ordinance, but it, it's really not enforceable. Just if y'all had an opportunity to read through it, you will realize.
I read through it. It's very, very entertaining. It's called chapter forty if you don't know it. And it's not just an animal ordinance, it's any non-human live vertebrate creature. And what that covers is, is everything except for humans. It covers beavers, coyotes, cats, ducks, geese, fish, hot cats, opossums, armadillos, deers, skunks, and squirrels. So I think it's overreaching to the extreme. Coffee City does not have, we don't have the ability to control the fish and the lake.
Yeah.
I, I took the liberty of calling Sharon Harrison over at Berryville and got a copy of their animal ordinance and it actually, it just talks, speaks to dogs and cats. There's some issues I have with that in that how they register things or whatever. I don't want to create a, I don't think we have the money to create a separate department for animal control or to put any more work on the rolls already that are loaded down, but this is something to read through and review and I would like to see everybody maybe contact another town, see if they can find another ordinance. Maybe we can get the best of all of them, put them together and figure out what might work for the city.
I went by this morning and visited with Ms. Harrison and had a long talk with her because I was very interested because I read, I read everything in chapter forty of our, whatever you want to call it, ordinance, and then I read the Berryville animal ordinance. And the Berryville seemed to be very reasonable, but I wanted to ask some specific questions on the performance level that they had in Berryville. And I had like five or six specific questions that I wanted to ask on, well, how does it work in Berryville? And the answers I got were just sort of the thing. They have a registration program in Berryville where they have tags and the tags are just with a year and then Berryville on there. I noticed theirs are for dogs and cats. It doesn't say dogs, it's D.O.S. I'm assuming that's a dog.
Yeah, I saw that too.
Anyway, I asked her how many dogs had been registered last year and she said about sixty. And I said, well, how many dogs are there in Berryville? And she goes, she wouldn't comment, she really doesn't know. And tonight, tonight at the Berryville council meeting, they're having a discussion on the animal ordinance, but what they want to do is they want to do a roundup. They want to do a sweep of everything in Berryville and just round up all the animals and Jackie Peck's going to be in charge of that. And I asked her, I said, exactly how many dogs or cats do you expect to get in that particular fashion? She really didn't know, she didn't have a particular comment. I noticed in the Berryville ordinance, they had had three amendments to the ordinance that they've passed it. One of them was that you only pick up three dogs a month. Well, I asked her if they were picking up three dogs a month and she said, oh, no, absolutely not. We can't even afford three dogs a month. And so they're not picking up three dogs a month. And I asked what their compliance rate was, you know, in Berryville. And she said, well, she didn't know, couldn't make any real comment on the compliance rate. Then I asked her about the cost of the tags. And she goes, well, they were real expensive. And she said, we got two hundred tags for fifty dollars. Well, that sounded real good. And then I started doing the math. Well, let me see, if you got sixty dogs registered and you're charging seven dollars a pop for the dogs, that's two hundred and eighty dollars. And the tags cost two hundred dollars. And then they had the administrative cost of putting the tags and so they're actually losing money. It's not actually a source of revenue tagging these dogs. And their compliance rate is not even fifty percent. I would say their compliance rate's maybe thirty percent. And then, so it went on and on and we ended it with this particular conversation and this was Ms. Harrison's advice from Berryville and this was her advice to their city council. And she said, don't pass any ordinance that we can't enforce. And so I looked at both these ordinances and I think we should have something, but I would like to make it very clean, very specific on something that we can enforce. Something that would be practical for Coffee City, something that wouldn't put on the burdens on us, on the citizens, and also something that wouldn't put a burden on the police department. Because when we discussed this the last time, I mentioned Donnie Malone and I didn't want to turn Mr. Malone into a dog catcher. You know, we've had the discussions about the police department, the police department's responsibilities and they say that they're overburdened already. Well, making him a dog catcher is not going to help, it's not going to help Coffee City and it's not going to help anything else. And also the administration, I didn't have a chance to talk with Shalina or Angela, but there's an administration involved in this also. So I've worked together and I've, I think what we ought to do is, I'm ready to take this into pieces, but I'm not going to spend a bunch of time doing it. It's just so preposterous.
I think we want to approve it.
And the Berryville ordinance is nice, but the Berryville ordinance, they're not getting compliance. They can't do it, say they don't want to do it. I think we should have something to do with vicious animals, specifically dogs, because theirs even dresses dogs and cats. And I said, well, how many cats do you have registered? Oh, we don't register any cats at all. Well, I said, well, why not? Well, you know, cats do not much problem, you know, we really can't do anything with the cats. They put prints on cars, we really can't do anything with cats, you know. I said, well, that's fine, so, and, and all non-human live vertebrate creatures, we can't cut that either. I think the only problem we've had in, the only complaints, and please, anybody jump in on here, the only complaints we've ever had in Coffee City has been vicious dogs.
Dauntish, oh, go ahead.
As a former resident of Berryville.
Yes, sir.
I found that their control procedures were pretty much ineffective. Okay, you've got two levels of animal control or animal registration, whatever you want to call it. One of it is exactly that, putting the tags on, okay? A difficult task at best. The other is a really difficult one of what about that barking dog that's waking me up in the middle of the night? That dog there. Berryville has absolutely no enforcement on that. They turn it over to the Henderson County Sheriff. The Henderson County Sheriff has a one officer in charge of animal complaints. And of course, most of us, that's what we're interested in, the animal complaints rather than the animal having a tag on. My time in Berryville, the cats were completely unrestricted. I never saw a cat with a tag on and I saw lots of cats around my property at various times.
We can relate.
And the dogs, again, when I had a problem with a neighbor's barking dog, the only source I could turn to was the sheriff. And it's, it's that way today. You would be burdening the police department to put the enforcement on them, but at the same time, if you write anything in there that says, we will not tolerate barking dogs at two o'clock in the morning, you have to have some enforcement.
Don, I have a question. Did you happen to ask her, they were entertaining this idea of doing a roundup of all these stray dogs? The cost or anything involved in that?
Well, you know, that was real interesting because I was trying to be specific and ask her questions that were actually important, which is enforcement, because she made the bold statement, we don't want it unless we can enforce it. And then Berryville also made the bold statement is, is we can't afford it, so we're not going to have it. And so they even, they even changed their own ordinance to where we can't afford it, so we're going to cut it down. So the answer to your question is, she would not answer that. And I, I said, well, I, I understand from in the past, reading in the paper, the Frankston citizen, how they had, the cost was, I forget the exact amount, I'm going to pretend I know. It was fifteen hundred dollars that Jackie Beck had rounded up on dogs and they couldn't afford it, so they just got rid of it. And I asked her how many dogs did she think she could round up? And it was almost comical because I know if you have a stick with a piece of wire on the end of it, you could probably just go down the road. And I know certain areas in Coffee City, if you could just go down the road and just as fast as you could lasso them, you could be throwing them in a truck. And so at the cost of, if you're hauling these dogs off too late, you couldn't just haul them off and put them in a field, you'd have to haul them off into an official facility that, look, we've got a dog and now we're going to take it. And if you multiply the things, it would be just like a cash register ringing off a hook. So the answer to your question is, she wouldn't tell me. And how much it's going to cost? I bet your boots, it would be, they won't be doing those dog roundups very often.
Like you say, when you do a roundup or something, I was thinking about this myself, but you know, you have to have cages, you have to have stuff to put these dogs in to care, transport them and whatever, or you have to pay an individual or something, so we're talking more money there than.
In order to have an effective animal ordinance, it has to be in a city that's large enough to have an animal control officer and a department to handle that. You can't, in a little town like Coffee City or Berryville or even Frankston, they can't afford animal control officers. It's a tough situation.
It, it's, it's real tough because the thing is, is it's not just, they weren't just dealing with dogs, they were, our past ordinance is, we were dealing with everything non-human vertebrate. And I actually had to go to the internet to, what is a vertebrate? Well, it's anything with a spinal cord and a skeletal system. Well, that covers a lot of ground, you know, that covers a lot of ground.
Of course, it's something we've never enforced either.
No, there's been, there's been, no, they just dumped this on our life like they did all these other things. They, they gave us something that was totally unfor, on chapter forty. I don't know where the other thirty-nine chapters are.
Well, that was Flugerville.
It was Flugerville and, and none of these things were like this one in particular that was passed separately were never even rewritten to be for Coffee City. I mean, they changed the name in there, say Coffee City, but I mean, the rest of it wasn't.
That's slimmed down considerably from what it originally was.
But don't we use, Henderson County comes out, you know, I used to, we call, we had some dogs just running around. We called Henderson County, the animal control, and came out and got them. They get charged up. You pay like.
I don't know.
It was last year. They came out and, it was across the road on, on Coffee Land and a doggy had some puppies, it was about nine of them.
Kind of that old house that.
Yeah, she went over there and she got them and taken them.
What did they do? About, did they charge you?
No, they didn't charge us, but now we had some on, came on trial promptly. And yes, my sister had to pay, I don't know, I don't know, it's somewhere between nine or twenty dollars, you know.
Maybe that's what we need to do, leave it up to the individual citizen to call Henderson County?
That's what we've been doing.
Well, I read in the Frankston citizen and they were, they were under the police reports and it was, it was reports of biting dogs. Donnie, how many biting dogs have you had?
We, I haven't had very many. Last year, I think I had maybe three and that's just guessing.
Was it the same dog or three different dogs?
Three different. And I, and two of them, I actually called the sheriff's department and they had to get special permission to come over here to help me out, simply because we're a municipality. And so they have to call their captain, lieutenant, whoever, you know, and then they have to call the sheriff and he has to say, yeah, go ahead and do it on two of those dogs. So, that I, that I can remember. But one, I think there might have been three, but on two, I know John Haverty did show up and helped me out with a couple.
If you have a vicious dog that is posing a problem, how would you generally handle it?
Well, like the one that I had over here that was running at people at the motel and keeping them inside their, their rooms and they was having to run from their cars, get in their rooms real quick. It was off the chain back behind the little strip mall there. And it was a bulldog and basically what I did is I stayed out there as long as I could. And every time he'd run at me, I'd have to, he'd charge me. He charged me probably fifteen, twenty times. I'd pull my gun on him. And he'd, he'd stop and stand there and bark and maybe run around in circles, but I, that's one of the incidents where I called the John Haverty and they had to call the sheriff and everybody else and he did come over and tranquilize that dog. And of course, that's kind of iffy too, to tranquilize one because it may work and may not. In this case, it did.
Would that be something that you could find out who the owner was, but you wouldn't?
Well, the owner, I, I knew who the owner was, but the owner was getting married and they were out of state.
Yeah, and I could see us having an ordinance that's going to specifically say like a dog like that's running around and not, don't have a chain or anything on it. Gets a loose vicious, yeah. And the owner be responsible because somebody get hurt. Somebody's got to pay that doctor bill. So I, I would see, see to having an ordinance to cover.
It is a state law, you know, like, there's state laws that cover a lot of this. It's just, it's the enforcement issue.
It feels like a fine form.
It's state, doesn't it?
Well, there's a state law on some things and then like I say, it, it does cover this, but you also need an ordinance also on, on some of this stuff, yes.
Well, you could, you could.
Ma'am?
Where you'd be able to find them for not, you know, making sure that dog was, had a latch and.
We would have to have, we would have to have a city ordinance addressing that particular issue.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
State may be worried we need to take this down too, something that.
To, to something simple like that.
Yeah, because the state is not going to enforce.
No, no, just the city is what I'm saying.
Berryville's wording was very nice. It was, it's very simple wording. They don't use the word vertebrate anywhere in here. They don't use the word non-human.
Well, they also limit it to so many a month where they don't control the, keep the budget in mind. We have budgeted nine hundred dollars for animal control. We've only spent two seventy-five. I mean, I don't know what Jackie Peck is charging anymore these days, but you know, to me, if, if there is a vicious dog or whatever, go ahead.
Basically what I've been doing here lately is since we do have a truck that we can haul things in as evidence and, and all that, but as far as dogs go, the truck has to be set up as an animal control vehicle. Now whether, you know, we use it for that all the time, we may not. But what I've been doing is if somebody calls with just an animal complaint, other than vicious dog, what I've been doing is calling, getting them the number to call Jackie Peck themselves and let them work out something. Now, if it's a vicious animal, sometimes I may have to call her myself too because she's got the cages and she's got the catching tools and things like that. It just depends on when I get over there, I have to assess the situation and see what I can do. Some animals are more vicious than others. The last time I called her, I only, the dog just got tired and ran up to me and laid down in front of me and it was just like, why'd I call her, you know? But she was there, so she took the animal anyway. But it just, it ran to my feet and laid down after hair standing up and everything else on his back and, and charged me two or three times.
Do we want to then just not do anything with this? I have to consider trying to simplify it a little bit.
I'm going to make a motion that we table it so we can, so we can put this in a real short.
The thing I would add to that is, I don't know why they have a certain tag. You've got a dog tag that's on there that gives the, the number that ties it all back, so.
It was a well-intentioned effort on their part, but the thing is, is that's why she wouldn't commit the compliance rate, she wouldn't commit to how many dogs were in town, so it was a wasted effort. And when you actually come down to the dollars it's been, since invested in it, they got no return. They actually were wasting money. They weren't getting compliance, the tags, and then the time put on these two people over here to comply on that was just, just thrown out the window. It wasn't doing anything. So since that's the whole purpose of the thing is to accomplish your goal, it wasn't accomplishing that at all. It was basically quitting. The only people who were complied were the honest citizens. And so you're just burdening people for things that weren't doing anything at all.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to table, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item seven, we're going to table item thirteen.
I thought we already did this.
Well, we did. There was a wording, there was a wording issue. So I think what they're going to do now is just redo it and try to start. Okay, consider an act upon a date for a budget workshop and we do need to get working on a budget for this coming fiscal year because we're getting close to the end of this fiscal year.
Do you all feel that we provided all the council members with a copy of the, what's actually been spent through the end of April, sometime in May, through the end of April, and necessary figures, do you think we could, each of us take that home or whatever and come back and actually handle it at a council meeting rather than a separate workshop meeting? Or do you want a separate workshop for it?
Probably initially I would think a workshop where everybody can.
A workshop would be good. That, that way we can, if we want to, want to.
We can get, if you remember last time, we got the copies of every transaction by account for the year. That we went through line by line. I'm not, my personal opinion, I'm not sure we need to do that this year.
Probably not.
Since we've already got, you know, we've been tracking it monthly pretty much.
But since Adam's on board, I, I remember the first meeting, the attendees were you, Pam, myself, and the man over here from the Frankston paper, J. Tom, were the three attendees. And then on the second session, we had me, you, and Adam in his office. Those were the grand total of the attendees for our budget meeting.
Well, the thing is, this budget kind of sets the blueprint for the rest of the year. That's what we're going to do. If you want roads, we need to look at roads.
If there's, if there's money that you want, that's where it all comes from.
If you want a stronger police department, you want whatever you want, that's what we need to.
Minister Mayor, we need to have a written budget proposal from the police department and a written budget proposal from the fire department. Okay? So that we can, we've got something better than what we've got here. I mean, as far as, those, I mean, the police department especially, we're, we're, we know we're way over what we budgeted.
I have put together some figures on the police department. That I could help Officer Chief Malone with as far as what we've spent today.
I'll be happy to sit down and help, help too as far as going through whatever.
Yeah.
But we need to, I mean, not only what we spent, but what we think we're going to have to have. Do we have any proof that it's not? Do we have, let's, let's not come up and have a meeting that says, oh, by the way, we need an additional eight hundred dollars for a.
Another set of tires or whatever it is, you know?
We need to work the Mustang money back, or the.
Camaro.
Camaro money back into that. So, so we know exactly where all that stands. I don't, we're tracking that, but.
Well, I think we'll have a better handle on the budget this go around than we did the last couple of times because.
We've got some history.
Yeah, we've got some good history from now.
Last time it was.
But you know, really.
Dark to figure out how much sales tax in California.
But really, we hit pretty close on this part. I think most of it was pretty.
We had some nice surprises along the way.
Yeah.
Like that franchise.
Electric franchise, yeah.
And Pioneer came through a lot better than we ever thought they would have, so.
Yeah, I'd probably be tapering off that one. Basically they're going to get caught up, I imagine.
Don't we still, Shalina, don't we still turn new warrants over to Pioneer right away?
They're always coming out, issuing warrants.
So, we have the people, we have people.
Constantly being fed.
Yeah, yeah, they're constantly being fed, so they're constantly working ordinances, so.
I didn't realize.
So are we going to try to set a date then for a workshop or?
We, do we want to do it before the next council meeting or?
Let's try if we can.
It might be in court.
I'm happy that's week.
Well, May, council meeting's on May the 12th, okay? We don't close the books. I mean, I, I wouldn't trust the check registers till the 5th. So that gives you just a very short time there to put all the numbers together and get all the data. So you would have to do it like on Thursday.
Before the meeting.
The 8th?
Yeah, the 8th. And hopefully I'll be, I've got, it's what time it, epidural on my back that Monday, so I'm not sure how long that takes, so. Hopefully I don't have to do that. It's been a month later, so.
So it's Thursday, the 8th?
Thursday, the 8th. Is it free for everybody?
Yeah, what time?
It's about, what time?
Six, six o'clock.
If I can just invite anybody in the audience, if you've got anything that you want, man, that's the time to ask for it. Whether it's money, you've got money and you want money for it, you want this money for that. And if you don't want something else.
So you might kind of profit that day, I guess is the question.
Just a date to, okay with everybody?
I'll make a motion if that's what you want. Ruthie, you have a thought for me?
No, I'm done.
I'd like to make a motion that we set a date for the budget workshop to be May the 8th at six o'clock.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who will make those reports?
Okay, consider an act upon Henderson County Elections Administration to handle the November elections for Coffee City. Do you have a lot of paperwork left to do, Angela?
Not right now.
Not right now, but you will have?
Yes, I will.
Okay. I just need a, I just need a motion from the council to ask Henderson County Elections Administration to handle the November election for Coffee City.
I would make a motion that we ask Henderson County. And elections.
Second to that?
I second.
All in favor?
Henderson, I mean Anderson would do it.
Okay, mayor's report. Well, I don't really have much of a report, but I would like to say that I was gone for three weeks and while I was gone, the staff, Coffee City, police department, fire department, Judge, Angela, everybody did an excellent job taking care of everything. And Angela, I mean Pam filled in, did a good job and everything ran fine, so real pleased with that. Got good staff right here. Okay, EDC report. Did you get one?
I do not have the amendments.
Bruce not providing it now?
Well, he's, he's going to do them for a month, I guess four months, pretty much. But he, he doesn't have them done yet, but he said he would do those.
Were they involved at all, EDC, with this big bass, batch over here?
No, it had nothing to do with the EDC. We, we paid money for a catfish tournament that has not happened yet and I don't even think it's been scheduled yet.
No, it hasn't. I talked to Larry about that.
We, we, but no, the, that was.
He suspects it's going to be, yeah, he suspects that that catfish tournament's going to be amazing.
Okay, I didn't know.
Okay, municipal court report.
We had a really, really good month. We had ninety-three new cases filed, forty-seven warrants were issued. We had ten dismissed after a driver's safety course, five after deferred disposition, and seven, seven other compliance dismissals, you know, a tag like being out, you know, small, small things like that. We brought in fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Out of that, four thousand, eight hundred and five dollars, I'm sorry, four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight came from Pioneer. We had a quarter transfer of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. And we also paid our quarter taxes, first quarter taxes were fourteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So we are still getting money from Pioneer.
Thank you. I would like to say that our police department's doing an excellent job, doing traffic control for the city.
They got high tension.
And I think the majority of it is on, is on 155 and 3506, so they're not pestering anybody in any of the side streets.
Yeah, most, most of it's on 155. Yeah, most of, most of it's on one fifty-five.
But they're doing, they're doing an outstanding job. Okay, police report.
Okay, this has been for the month of March, accidents were two, agency assists were four, arrests were three, uh, assaults were two, burglaries were three, callouts were seven, uh, suspicious persons two, thefts were three, for a total of twenty-six.
Do you know what those three arrests were for? Off the top of your head?
Oh, I fell out of his chest. Uh, not off the tops of my head, uh, I, uh, I arrested one, and, and my officers arrested two others. Uh, one was over here at the motel, um, I believe that was an assault. And, uh, so, um, and I, I just, off the top of my head, I can't remember what the other two are right now.
What was it, he goes, or...
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Before I start with the report, I had, uh, talked with the Mayor Pro Tim last week, we had our engine fixed at the Chrysler International, and the city, we charged that, and we wanted to repay. We've been a real scatterbrained for the last week, well, more than that, but the guy will be here by tomorrow to sign it, he has to be, he'll, to sign the check, we've got the check written, uh, showed it to Angela, Angela comes back here every day.
Got the check, just...
No, so I kind of harassed her today, and I come up there about every hour or so, but it's still not ready. Uh, but that's my fault, I mean, we've just, we've really been busy on some other things. Um, on the budget request, if that's on the, if I can't make it, can I submit that to you?
Sure.
Okay, okay.
Sure.
You know, we'll probably get with you anyway, look at some numbers. I, I told you, you know, two things, I really need an extra.
Okay.
Um, we, we need a deal for maintenance, we need a deal for cleaning, if it's mobile, I mean, last year was kind of messed up. Um, are we still doing the cleanup twenty-six, twenty-seven with the garbage cans here? Okay, because I got to move some stuff out of the way, just to make sure. Uh, we turned in our request to the Fire Marshal's office this morning, Coffee City and Berryville's been turned in this morning.
Is that for your county allocation?
That's for the county allocation, we... I'm part of it.
Well, that's, that's the same question.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's our county allocation.
How long does that take to get it?
Probably two weeks. I mean, it's not going to make it next to, it'd be more than likely, because...
Okay, but it'll be, it'll, it's going to be in this fiscal year.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, it's not going to be nothing like it was last year, we've, the commissioners...
Been on there since June, July first last year.
Yeah, the commissioners have took it steps to make sure the letters got out earlier, and the, the judge got them out earlier, and the audits were done, so, I mean, anything that's slowing us up now is purely us, but ours are in. So, probably a couple of weeks or, I don't know, what do you think about that commissioner? Couple of weeks?
If all the documents are there, it's approved by the Fire Marshal, it should be submitted this week for next week, what's that of bills?
So, and that's what I did, I made sure everything was in before I took it to him, so...
This will be the final payment on your truck at this point, though.
I got that notice Saturday too, so, but anyway, we had, uh, we had twenty-two calls, uh, two building fires, uh, now while you were gone, the first part of the month, they were going to submit, we had four house fires in there, one a week, and, uh, but that's next month. Three rubbish, ten medicals, couple of trees, couple of boat calls, we did have a boat call just for friends and giggles, Saturday night during the high wind for the fishing tournament. Mr. Rutledge didn't answer his phone, we were going to send him out there in the waves.
Was that that pontoon boat, was it a pontoon? Yeah, I thought it was a boat.
You see him dragging it back?
Game warden about six o'clock in the evening?
No, I didn't see them.
I got, he drove one in about six.
Oh.
They were dragging one about...
Six, six thirty-seven, somewhere there. Uh, the police did real good, they helped us out, they spotted from the bridge, they spotted from the, uh, uh, lollipop area, and they were looking for different places to put them in. They didn't have a trailer, so we had to haul them all in back.
Well, and I told Chief Malone earlier, if they never need to come out on my phone out there, I'm, I've got the view around that.
You got a good view.
Yeah, and I got an extra boat, slip, if somebody needs to put something in there or hold it, store it for a day.
Yeah, well, normally, our rule is, after, when gas prices and everything went out of the roof, we, we burned a tremendous amount of gas and went pulling back from the dam. So our rule's been, we'll, it's easier for us to put you in somewhere and take one of our trucks or a car and run you to get your trailer.
Oh, yeah.
It's a lot, it's a lot easier, times two, the stumps and the wind and the...
Yeah, we got, uh, fourteen fire, senior firefighters, uh, seven of those, I said thirteen, that's a typo, but seven of those fourteen are interior qualified. Uh, our past trainings, we've been concentrating on driving and safety, this last April fifth and sixth, this last weekend, we just went through Texas, we don't have a simulator up here, we went through, we got, uh, twenty-eight people went through that class. Uh, Mr. Graham got a chance to look at it and...
Yeah, it's very impressive.
It's, it's, it'll make it snow, make it fog, make it rain, I was doing good, so he blew a tire out on me, I mean, you're going to wreck, I mean, that's how it goes. Um, but we got twenty-eight people in, and that, that was from Coffee City, Berryville, that's the pointer, uh, the room York City, Brown Cross in some, so we covered a good, good area. Upcoming events, we're going to do our ISO, we're working on, we're still working on our ISO, virus suppression schedule, uh, looks like we pretty much got a nine in the bag, from talking to them the other day, uh, we're going to work on our, our, our alternative water supply test, that's coming up very soon.
What are we now, you say a nine?
We're probably going to be a nine with, uh, with what paperwork they have to turn in now.
What are we currently?
Unrated.
Oh.
Unrated is what they, they've dropped us to, is unrated. So, uh, we were showing ten, and then like State Farm, they go by property loss, we're doing pretty good with State Farm, because we haven't, uh, been losing. Unless the negative one is losing, when they call us now, after it's lit, they should run out of five ounces, something wrong. Uh, April twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, we're going to, we're going to continue our training, we're going to be doing the Incident Safety Officer Class, I think we even have a couple, or at least one police coming, they get two, twelve hours for it, but it's a, the Safety Officer Class on how to be safe on any signals and things like that. May tenth is the fly-in at, um, Aral States. Fifth through eleventh is the annual conference. In this EVAC class, what this will do is, uh, it's an emergency vehicle operator's course, we're going to do the road course part of that, and I'm going to get with, uh, Harrington, see if we can use, uh, the old Coffee Land area, if not, we can go up to Lake Paling, I met this church, they said we can use that, I'd like to stay close. But that'll be where we actually put the cones up, and they've done the simulator, they've done the paperwork, and they've had these classes before, but this one here, they'll get out and, and, uh, run over cones. So we're trying to do everything we can to make sure they're driving right, and don't do a U-turn in front of Mayor Pro Tim when you're looking for a bad guy.
What?
Friday, did you see that?
Oh.
I have a blinker on, I didn't know, but I figured you'd be like...
I didn't call the cops.
Well, he was with me looking for them, so...
Lean over and write the ticket.
Yeah, other than that, um, other than that, I think that's it, is there something I've missed? I don't know. Okay, all right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone have anything else you'd like to discuss before we consider a journey?
I'll make a motion if we do. Second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Did we know we have to find the property of Coffee? Are you original?
What, will tell you?
Yeah.